Good evening. August 18th, 2025, Eastern City Council meeting is now called to order. Everyone, please stand for our prayer. Michael Kelly, come lead us some prayer, please.
It's all due respect, is it okay how with that Reverend Cal pray for him today?
Hey, he is a professional.
Yeah.
Let us all bow our heads. Gracious God, our Father, we come to you in the only name that matters, in the name of Jesus Christ. Thank you for this city council, this mayor, this mayor pro temp, and all of these citizens, their God, who are here to see about blessing and making this city move forward. We thank you in advance for what our ears will hear and what our hearts will take in. We pray, dear God, that it be done for the good of the people and to your glory in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thank you. If I continue to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, how are you?
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Everybody notice Gina looks a little different tonight. Changed her hairdo up, you know. This is our deputy clerk who's sitting there for Gina Holliday today. So everybody be nice to him. I'm sure he's gonna be perfect, but still be nice to him. No, you're not gonna be nice? No, he's out, we gotta go?
No. All I know is stop.
It's the Goodfellas.
Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda. Do we need to add anything, take anything off? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Second. They're properly moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes. Today, we have a special treat, a presentation from Judge Bradley Cobb from the Third Circuit Court. Everybody, please welcome Judge Cobb.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I feel crazy with y'all at my back. All right, good evening. Again, my name is Judge Bradley Cobb, and I bring you greetings from the Third Circuit Court of the County of Wayne, also known as just Wayne County Circuit Court. I am here as a community leader and as one of your judges. Yes, sir. I'm just old enough to have forgotten his instructions that quick. All right, we'll see what we can do. Anyway, I'm here tonight, let's see, sit left and right.
Up there, let's move.
All right.
There's a big screen right there.
Hey, now I can see. My glasses back on. All right, I am here tonight, and I want to say in advance, thank you for having me here tonight, mayor, and all the wonderful members of the city council, of all the employees of this great city of Inkster, to the wonderful citizens who make up this great city. And it is a great city. You'll never let anyone tell you any different. Great city with great history and heritage. But again, I am here tonight to providing community outreach to communities throughout Wayne County. We are a very large county, and this is my first stop, volunteer to come here because Inkster holds a special place in my heart. So I'm out here to talk to you all. You probably don't get to talk to judges very often, and when you do, maybe it's not in the best circumstances. But I am here in a wonderful circumstance. I just want to talk about a few things. I don't want to take up a lot of your time. We're out here just to give you a sketch of where I'm going to go. I want to tell you, talk about the Third Circuit Court, its impact throughout Michigan, a little bit about the court, and all the different divisions of the court, and talk about our mission as we work hand in hand to provide services to you all. Now, the Third Judicial Circuit Court is a trial court. It sits above the District Court. The Honorable Sabrina Johnson, a very dear friend of mine and law school friend, she is your District Court Judge. We sit above the District Court, probate, and municipal courts. As you can see from the chart, the Michigan judicial system operates in a similar fashion, but not quite as the federal system. In Michigan, the highest court is, of course, the Michigan Supreme Court, where we have justices, then the Court of Appeals, and then it comes down to the Circuit Court, Court of Claims, and then under that are the District Courts, Probate Court, Municipal Court. In Michigan, the Probate Court operates separately, and I'll talk about that in a moment, because a lot of people think that that is the Circuit Court, but the Probate Court is an entirely separate court. And the Third Circuit Court, I'm gonna do this, because I just feel bad that you all behind me like this. All right? So I'm gonna be doing that circle. And in the Third Circuit Court, we have 59 judges. There are 21 criminal judges, 19 civil judges, 11 families for domestic, and 6 family judges for juvenile. Probate Court has 2 probate judges assigned to the Third Circuit Court. They help us out, although they're not directly connected with us. We certainly love the fact that they have lent us, if you will, 2 probate judges under. We also have 24 referees, and a total, as of recently, of 468 total employees throughout all of Wayne County. Our normal business hours, as you can see, are 8:30 to 4:30. I wish I could get off at 4:30. I just wish I could get off at 4:30, but it never ends. And I have the disease that gets handed down by my father, I'm a workaholic, so, but 4:30 is when we end. There are 4 locations, the Coleman A. Young Building, which we mystically call the KMAC, where civil and the family domestic division are, Lincoln Hall of Justice, where family and juvenile, that's where they're housed, Criminal Justice Center is a new building. Coleman A. Young, you know where that's at downtown, but Lincoln Hall of Justice is off of 75, and now the building where I serve in the Criminal Justice Center is also located just up the street from Juvenile Center, where on Russell and Warren area off of 75. It's a new building. We used to be housed in the Frank Murphy Hall of Justice, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, and then of course, we have the Knob Scott Building where the Friend of the Court, they operate from. The mission and vision of Wayne County Circuit Court, our mission is to serve the community by providing accessible and equal justice for all. Our vision is to be an exemplary and innovative court, leading with integrity in providing justice and public service. Where, if you really take a good look at us, there's a good mix of nationalities, backgrounds, religions that serve on the bench, and certainly the employees which staff Wayne County Circuit Court. We work in conjunction with the Wayne County, I guess I should be clicking too, right? Wayne County Sheriff's Department, they provide security for the courts and the jails. We also work with allied, these gentlemen, there's a couple gentlemen here on this evening who are now a part of the security for the Wayne County Circuit Court, and then there's Wayne County Clerk's Office we work with, court clerks. We have 1 clerk per courtroom, we need 2, but hey, I'll take the one that I have rather than not have one at all. We also work with, finally, with the, in conjunction with the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, who you all know, the Ms. Warrants, where warrants are submitted to, and the charges come from the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, and they're prosecuted in front of judges. And I meant to tell you, it's obvious because I talked about me being housed in the Criminal Justice Center, that I'm in the Criminal Division of the 4 or 5 divisions that we have. I was a prosecutor for 25 and 1/2 years and have been a judge, just coming up on 3 years. Our divisions, as you can see, civil, criminal, family domestic, and family juvenile. In the civil, if you have a lawsuit, then involves monetary damages of over $25,000, then Circuit Court Civil Division will handle that. If you have below $25,000, then you'll be in front of the Honorable Sabrina Johnson, because those are small claims, not what you have with the District Court level, small claims court. Contract disputes, property, and of course, election matters are handled by our Civil Division. Criminal Division, adult felonies, and juveniles who are designated as adults because the crime is so egregious, and the prosecutor decides on certain ones whether to send them up to be tried as adults. We also do criminal appeals from the District Court when you all, family members, people you know, might have some disputes over whatever decision that Judge Johnson decides, then we are the court that handles the appeals. Family domestic, as you can see, divorce, child support, custody, parenting time, PPOs, emergency, always, I meant to commit to memory, emergency ERPOs. Michael, help me.
Emergency.
I can tell you what they do, I don't know what the ERPO, I can't remember what that is. Chief Jenkins, you remember what that is?
She doesn't.
That's okay. I'm gonna put you on Front Street like Michael did me.
Extreme risk protection.
Yes, extreme risk protection orders, and this is something that we ought to think about, particularly in the African-American community, we, sometimes there's a reluctance to talk about those relatives, friends, neighbors who have mental health issues, and if you know someone who has a mental health crisis, and you know that they have access to guns, then you could apply to the courts, call your local police department, and the guns, they will come out and take the guns, and some mental health personnel will see about that individual. Keep that in mind. And lastly, Friend of the Court, family juvenile, the juvenile delinquency, underage, 18, child protection, adoption, now I'm feeling bad because I have my back to you all, adoption, and guardianship, and then truancy. We are the busiest court in, Circuit Court in Michigan. We do, is it 2 and 1/2 times?
Yeah, 2 and 1/2 times, open county, 4 times we call it, about the other days.
Yeah, that's how busy we are. That's why I can hardly sleep. That's why I can't leave at 4:30, because we do a lot of cases. As you can see, appeals and reviews, there's 570, well, we'll start from the bottom, 59,303 new cases as of the end of last year. So you can imagine, with a hot summer, hot heads, and criminal, and other, you know, the other divisions, there's a lot of cases that we handle. Criminal Court, just 7,127 new cases passed, and we're just now getting past some COVID cases because we are trying cases. And so we are making a good, as they say, college try to handle all these cases and expedite them so that justice, the squeaky wheel of justice is not as slow as it could be. So that's 12.8% total cases compared to 2023. Jury trials, let's talk about this. You know, as a minister, I'm always gay. Reverend Cobb, how can I get out of jury? I was a prosecutor for many years, and my favorite answer is, "You can't." And I won't let, and I won't tell you how. Why? Because ma'am, sir, you want citizens, fair-minded citizens, just like you on your jury. Am I right? If I was in church, I'd ask for amen. So don't always look, you know, people look to get out, and I can understand it's time consuming, but it's, when they, we, you, the history of African-Americans, can I get a witness? Take the church for a little bit, my brother Perkins. We, is that, we haven't always had this right, and it's a fight that we ought to honor by sitting on a jury. And so, what about those jury trials? I'm glad you asked. Okay. The qualification of jurors is listed on the screen as well, you have to be 18 years of age, but when you get to age 70, if you want, you don't have to, but if you want, you can ask for an exemption, and you don't have to sit. And then you also, after 1 year, going down almost to the bottom, you're not going to be called when you served on a jury. And service in this instance also means that you were called down there, you showed up, and even if you weren't selected, then your 1 year starts over again. But US citizen, Wayne County residents, ability to communicate in English, that's very important. We have a vast amount of people who don't communicate in English as well as we like, and there's going to be exhibits and other things that they need to be able to see and interpret in English. And there's the other qualifications. Here is a picture, it's the most recent picture, that good-looking guy on the far right. I wish they'd point it, I don't know how to make it point, I'll just go. All right. So this is the bench, this is civil, family, and criminal bench, it is not the entire, it's just whoever can make it on this day, and it's the most recent picture. But ladies and gentlemen, this esteemed council, mayor, and staff, all of you here, we are here for you. Whatever you need, then we want to be a part of this community. I do not for you to think that we're some, some sitting so high and not connected to our community, and that's the reason why we are here, and we will always be here for you. So thank you again, mayor, city council, staff, I want to thank you all for just putting up with me for a little while. All right? Last but not least, I'll take a few questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
From the council, as questions for citizens, we don't want to take up too much more of your time. Before questions come, there is a handout flyer about community services, so you get some more information. Over through my immediate line. Questions?
Yes. What you, you had mentioned earlier, that you all are 2 and 1/2 times busier, and my question was just, why? Is it due to the area, or just why are you 2 and 1/2 times busier than the other communities or counties?
I believe it's because of the size of Wayne County, that's a really good question. Most of it is the size of Wayne County, there's a lot of businesses in Wayne County because of size. I think Judge Van Houten, one of my colleagues, I heard a presentation that she put on, and I want to say that she said that it is.
Judge, get to the mic.
That it is, that it is 640, or 600, between 640 and 650 square miles. There's a lot of people in the community and a lot of businesses, that's where you get to civil cases. Criminal cases, it is what it is, but we do the very best we can with the judges that we have on campus. All right? Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Praise the Lord, my pastor, brother Fitz, TMBC.
Come on up.
Counsel Ty Perkins, Mayor Council Nolan, and official staff. Hello. My name is Cameron Fitz. I'm a resident of, I'm a resident of the city of Inkster and a homeowner of 3845 Henry. I just want to ask you a question, pastor, my pastor. You know, my mother, Mother Fitz, died last year, March 17, 2025, oh, 24 AD, and she left me the house. I guess we were right now. And I got out of jail September 30th last year, out of Wayne County Jail. Well, before I went in, hey, cuh, hey, cuh, and what happened, hey, pastor? Look at here. I came home, and I turned the key, and it didn't work, so I went across the street to Pastor Duncan, I said, "What's going on, man?" I changed key, and put the alarm, changed the locks, and put cameras in the house, and ain't nothing on now. He said, "Man, they've broken your house and moved in." My mama's house, Mother Fitz, $300,000 house. And I said, "What, call police?" So I called mine, no one. And he said, "Well, you know, go up there, that's called home invasion first degree." He said, "Section MCL 751, 10-point section F means by forcibly coming into the house. Section 2 is, they got a weapon." She's a CPL holder, Laquita Wallace, and the guy who named the water bill is, $4,000 right now, is Victor Jensen, who's an umbrella long, and he's in my house right now. So I went on through the tank and I filed.
I'm probably gonna do what they won't do. What's your question?
Okay, the question is, I went to the chief, and I went to the mayor, and everybody, I even went to Pastor Doug, but he said, "Well, go over there and file a no sequestration." Did that, she denied that. Locked me up the day before, he said, "Well, I don't know where he at," and he went on Zoom. And, okay, so still now, and left me home, he's still in my house right now, asked the chief what to do. She said, "What's the address at the last meeting, cuh, didn't she?" And so, they still ain't went over and did nothing, they still in my house. So what do I do?
But I probably can't answer your question. It sounds like a criminal matter, and you went to the chief and that.
And the mayor.
And the mayor.
Who was my mother's attorney.
And then, you know, there has to be.
And still ain't did nothing.
I don't know what to tell you.
Thank you, girl.
Other than, I would say, you.
That's a great hour.
But you filed, you filed your report, correct?
Ain't did nothing about, they went out to the house and lied to.
All right. Any other less specific questions? I mean, I respect him for the question, but I just not in a position to answer those kind of questions. Anything about the court or jury services? Counsel, any questions? We appreciate you.
We still appreciate your comment.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right. All right. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Some move, second.
They're properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Passes. Who was that? Who went trouble with that?
My, my.
All right. Any boards and commissions, any nominations? No? All right. Ordinance, no first or second reading? New business, item A.
Consider approval of commission on Asian annual cookout, place Whitley Park, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. September 12th, 2025. Organizer is Sabrina Ann Lawrence.
All right. Some move.
Support.
They're properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes. Let them be.
Consider approval of street closure, block party, street to be closed, New York Cross Streets, Wellington Sylvia. Date of event, August 24th, 2025. Block party time, 3 p.m. to 10 p.m. Event organizer, Tangela Ward. Event must conclude at 10 p.m.
Some move, second.
They're properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval of street closure, block party, street to be closed, New York Cross Streets, Wellington Sylvia. Date of event, August 24th, 2025. Block party time, 3 p.m. to 10 p.m. Event organizer, Tangela Ward. Event must conclude at 10 p.m.
Some move, second.
They're properly moved in second, any discussion?
I was just gonna ask, Mr. Mayor, was Tangela here? Or, I didn't.
You sure?
Yeah.
Sure to work? Okay. All right, any other questions, comments?
I think she just asked if anyone could help donate to the event, because she reached out to me about the event as well.
She's asking for donations to help sponsor the event. Ms. Tangela Ward, everybody knows her, so if you would like to donate towards the event, please contact Ms. Ward. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes. Public participation. Director Lisa. Good evening.
Just a couple announcements, just want to make you guys aware of the upcoming Trap Bingo on August 29th. I know everybody is excited. I actually have tickets tonight, if you guys would like to get them. If not, they can be purchased over at the Dozer Rec or at the station. Tickets in advance are $12 to purchase them now, and they'll be 15 at the door, and that's the 29th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the rec center. The final movie night, that will be Friday, this Friday, August 22nd, at AIA High School from 7 to 10 p.m. We hope everybody comes out and participates in this final movie night. So far, the movie nights have been really good, the kids and everybody, families come out and had a lot of fun. And lastly, just want to make sure everybody is paying attention to America's Got Talent for Inkster's Own the Funkatears. The quarterfinals will be Tuesday, September 9th, and voting results will be September 10th. I got some flyers, so you guys make sure you all come on, you know, and watch, and tune in, and vote, and, you know, let's show out for Inkster. And that's about it.
All right, thank you. Shirley Hankerson.
Good evening, mayor and council, and citizens of Inkster. I'm here tonight because of blight, all right? And what I, so I got with a couple of my friends and neighbors, and what we did, we put a proposal together regarding code enforcement, and we would like to see a committee for code enforcement. So I have a proposal that we would like to submit to the council for them to view, and I need to forward it to your secretary, maybe for her to dispense it?
You send it to the clerk, city clerk.
City clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Because it's a mess, I mean, and now that I'm home more and I see a lot, it bothers me when I see someone that purchased a home, all right, and it almost burned to the ground, somebody lost their life there, and they come and they call themselves repairing it, and putting it up for sale, and come to find out the things that should have been done or half-done, the person that they moved in only last there, like, she wasn't there a good 90 days, all right, before she was out. Now the house is up for sale, the grass is. The grass has never been cut. There's a tree growing on the side of the house. The lawn is almost as high as the fence in the back, all along the fence. And not only-- so I want more accountability to people that come in our community, buy homes and turn them into slum properties. That's not fair to citizens. We love our community, okay? And we're done. We're done. And what I'm proposing is that we have two people per district that can help oversee code enforcement and work with our code enforcement officer to get more results. And hold every person that owns rental property responsible for cutting the grass, not the person that rents the property. But the owner needs to be responsible. It's their property. It's not the renter's property. And half the time, they don't come with equipment for snow or lawn care. They do good to pay the rent. And that's it. Because if I go more, I'll be preaching, and I don't preach.
Mayor, I know Director Lisa was talking about block clubs. So, you know, like, we talk about how we don't really want a lot of separate-- we're trying to get everybody to be like one Inkster now. So if you want, if you could come up and just kind of talk about potentially block clubs and then, because I know you guys are trying to get the block clubs back up and going. I think that'll be a good way to get the city, you know, everybody can work together.
Yeah, so last council, I did make an announcement that we will be having our first block club meeting will be on the twenty-fifth of September. And so we'll actually be partnering with housing. So there'll be a housing group where they'll have captains that will be appointed for the housing division. And then for all the other districts in the area, that will be the point of this initial block club meeting is to appoint captains for those, for those areas. And so flyers will go out, you know, socials will go out, a code red will go out just letting you guys know when that meeting will be. But you can kind of pencil it in for September twenty-fifth. But that's-- those meetings will be where you can address those concerns, where you'll have a point of contact who will be able to get that information for you. You know, like we said, we don't want to have a number of different organizations, a bunch of different groups. And, you know, I think block clubs is a really good start. You know, who knows better what's going on in your neighborhood than if you live in the neighborhood? And so appointing a captain to that area, you know, we even discussed as much as, you know, maybe just having some kind of signal radio system where, you know, people can call into or listen into for different things for the particular captain that would be over that. So just stay tuned. That will be coming soon, like I said, next month, September twenty-fifth. Thank you. So it's either going to be at the rec center or it'll be at the Invision Center. We're right now finalizing the location. But just know the date will be on the twenty-fifth of September. But I'll make an announcement next council.
You have a question in the back, too?
I have a question there because I have an issue with that, too.
Come to the mic.
A neighbor of mine who recently moved out, they were renters. And I'm fighting rats, mice, and roaches because the lawn hasn't been cut one time, one time, all summer long. I have to have my son, my seventeen-year-old son, go do their backyard. I just had to get my car fixed because the mice that are in their yard, because the lawn is so long, has been nesting on my brakes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
We can send the information out on code red once it all comes out, so you guys don't--
And understand, too, if everybody downloads a new city app, you can send in a complaint without calling anybody anything. You just send it, it goes directly to code enforcement, C.C., and you'll get a response. So a lot of times you'll call, people won't pick up the phone because they're out in the field. So, and then you don't necessarily get a call back to know that maybe they went there, gave a warning, they went there, issued a citation, but you don't know that. So you just look out your window, you frustrated by what you see. So if we use our system correctly, that we paid all this money for, for the app and then code red also, you will get the information to code enforcement and then you'll get a response when it's completed. We issued a citation. We gave a three-day warning. So you'll know what's going on, so you can follow up if that person doesn't comply or the situation has been changed. If a person does not cut their grass, you call us, we will cut the grass. Because we don't want the neighborhoods to look like that. We still gonna give them that citation. But that's what we need to address. So if you give her the address, we'll get the grass cut. All you have to do is let us know. We have four vendors, five vendors, to cut grass. If you see something is out of order, you call us.
You shouldn't even have to tell them if they already contracted. You know, who have a--
But don't blame the contractor. We give them certain parcels to cut. Vacant lots, vacant homes. But if a renter moves out on Tuesday and ain't cut the grass for a month, we're not gonna know that until you call us. You have to let us know. But we all are on the same page. We don't want our neighborhoods to look messy. So even though it costs you a whole bunch of money to have five vendors to cut grass, we have to cut the grass because people won't cut it. And you're right about renters. A lot of times renters don't have lawnmowers or snowblowers. That's true. And ultimately, the homeowner is responsible, but they're not there. A lot of these homes are owned by foreign companies in Ireland, China, all over the place. They don't know what's going on here.
So is it their responsibility?
Well, you can issue them a ticket, but what we gonna do? They ain't coming from-- Well, it depends on your lease agreement. Now, most lease agreements say whoever living in the house was to cut the grass. But if they don't cut it, what we gonna do? There's a lot going. You're completely right, and you have a right to feel frustrated. We have two code enforcement officers for the whole city right now. So we need one more. So if someone's interested in being a code enforcement officer, we have a position available. I don't trust you with a gun. I don't know, Mrs. Lash. But in addition, I think it's a great idea to either the block clubs or a couple people in each district, you patrol your own district and you just let us know where we need to be. It would make it a lot easier for code enforcement because now we got an address, go check out such and such. They don't have to drive around all day. They waiting for you to call you, they go check it out. We do what we're supposed to do. The grass needs to be cut, ordinance can let DPS know. So I think that's a great idea. I'm looking forward to more participation from the residents. We're all ears. I'm with it. I hate to see it when I drive down the street because it makes my neighborhood look bad. It devalues my property. And we all feel the same way on that. So just let us know.
How many people in here have the app? No. The who?
Inkster app.
If you have a phone, you can download the city of Inkster app. It's free. And you won't miss anything. You won't miss announcements about community events. You have a way to communicate us directly. You don't have to call us and leave a message and wait for somebody to call back. You shouldn't-- Oh, that's fine, you can call. But if you don't like to, you can use the app and you know we have the information and you can get a response back. Because I want you to know what we're doing or not doing, so you can come in and say, good job, or y'all didn't take care of your business.
And it's another level of accountability for us in code enforcement. So if you have that paper trail of, hey, I did the app and now I'm calling you, there's a paper trail for, especially when the block clubs come, like, you know, come about, each council person then can, you know, we can kind of be on top of it a lot more because there's a paper trail, you know? So I know, like, a lot of us don't necessarily like to use the app, but a phone call is kind of like, well, they didn't call me. You know what I mean? But I can say, no, I saw it in the app and it's case number X, Y, and Z, and they put it in two months ago, you know? So if you-- I know, like, it's nice to get somebody on the phone, but you can, I prefer you do both. That way, there's level of accountability at the city level as well. Yeah, and put in writing, yes, thank you.
And that's something that can be done at the block club meeting to show people if they aren't on the app, get everybody signed up on the app as well.
And when you organize the block club meetings, let your city council person know. So they may want to attend some of the block club meetings, get things rolling, make sure everybody has their number, so we can tackle these problems efficiently. Okay. Sarah Ward and Jason Ward.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Ward, and this is my son, Jason. I live at two-five-eight-five-two Woodbine Drive. And the reason I'm here tonight is because I was directed by-- I was in here last Thursday paying my taxes. And I had a water bill for one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars--
For one month?
One bill.
One month?
For the month of June. And I asked, I said, well, I told the lady, I said, I think this is a joke. Could you really pull my account? Honestly, I'm trying to be nice. I said, could you pull my account up? And she said, that's not a joke, that's what you were-- oh. So then she called back in the back and had another lady run the graph. And she said, they came on, they said, I had a leak. I said, I'm a single resident in that house and I didn't have a leak. My son, here's a plumber. The first next question was, is he licensed? Yes, he is, okay? My point is, I think this could have been-- the response I should have received is let us investigate. Because they also-- the one lady from the back said, all your meters are perfect, and I do have a new meter.
You have a new meter, okay.
But I could tell horror stories that I've heard on the street about some of these meters, okay? So I don't, that's not my business. But I know for a fact that my bill went from like eighty to a hundred dollars a month to a thousand and forty-nine or fifteen-hundred. Someone should have concern. And then I said, we don't have leaks. And she said, you wouldn't know it was leaking. So I have a problem with communicating with people that tell me what they know and they don't know. I really do, because it only adds stress. So I wanted-- she said, come here tonight, so I'm here. He can show you his license if he needs to, but you know what I'm saying. So I think that we need to be better with customer service and to understand that if you stress me out, and I know, I know better, I shouldn't have to prove it to you right there, you should investigate. And that's what I want known, and I want to know what next steps are. Because I don't really think this was the forum.
Well, first of all, let me apologize for the way you were treated at the desk. Just so you know, the general public knows, we are already exploring getting customer service training through Simco for the entire city, parks and recs, cashier's office, clerk's office.
Badly needed.
We know we have to improve. I don't like a lot of stuff that I hear. You should not be treated that way when you come in here with a fourteen-hundred-dollar water bill. That being said, if you have a new meter, if you have a leak, we should be able to detect it by the drop. Because these new meters are cost a whole bunch of money, and we spent five million dollars, I think six million dollars on the system. So we should be able to look into it, pull it up and take a look. Especially if your bill's been eighty to a hundred dollars every month prior. Something in general could be leaking under the house, you would know. I wouldn't know either. But this new system should be able to tell if there's some leaking. I don't know if they were looking at the paperwork saying you got a leak or that was an automatic response.
I think it was automatic response.
A lot of times with the old meters, at least, when you get some crazy bill, either the system spit out a crazy bill, which it did, and does.
Yes.
Or somebody could, your toilet could be leaking in the basement and you don't hear-- you know how you hear a toilet when it's running all the time?
That's the only thing--
I'm not saying your toilet--
I know, but I'm gonna tell you, there was some, you know, I thought at one point I had a norm, a bill in Ebbawery, I think. And I brought it in. And they said they was gonna investigate it. And I assume they did, but they didn't document anywhere on my record that it was leaking. But they took, it was seven hundred, they took five hundred off. And I owe for two months, so that, like, is my average. So I'm just saying, I know I have ten thousand five hundred dollar plumbing work done by Dearborn Plumbing in my house. My son's a plumber, and we're very vigilant on checking for anything leaking. And I just, to me, there was this question in my integrity asked me, you know, is he licensed? But go ahead, my son wants to say something. He's not talking much.
What she didn't speak on was the leak, that they say it spiked for a week. The document shows for seven days.
Okay.
So if it indeed was a leak and nobody repaired it, how did it stop after seven days?
Yes.
That's the problem that I have.
I did, you know, I have your addresses on your card right now.
Yes.
I want to make sure you talk to Latoya. Make sure you have her phone number. We will definitely-- we gotta do better. But that's a great point. If it spiked for seven days and it stopped, what changed?
That's right.
If you didn't fix it, you know, so we need to look into that and figure that out, for sure.
Well, we didn't know it spiked for seven days till we got here last week.
Well, no.
That's what papers are.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming in tonight and letting us know.
All right.
Dino Van.
Hello, hello, everybody.
Hello. Long time no see.
Yes, sir. I see a lot of new faces. I'm gonna try to introduce myself a little bit. I'm Dino Van, lifelong resident in Inkster. I ain't going nowhere. Really just here for the community, man. I'm a skilled tradesman, I'm a structural ironworker. So I kind of go around building big buildings and bridges and superstructures and things like that. But it's really in my heart to bring all of the skills, all the things that I've learned, all the things I've accomplished, to bring it back to my hometown and to give it away, give it to the community. So I brought you STEEP, which is the skilled trade enrollment assistance program, which was successfully getting the hardest-hit populations, the most at-risk populations, getting them into these skilled trades, making a lot of money, up to thirty to forty dollars an hour. So we changed a lot of lives for a lot of families in our states and in our communities. I'm also a co-founder of Community Up Project, which brought you guys to Juneteenth, the annual Juneteenth celebration. And me and my wife founded Our Brain and Body Bar, which is bringing all holistic, all natural remedies, like sea mosses and black seed oils and things like that to the community. But I'm not here under no hats, I'm not here under no organizations, I'm not here under any of that. I'm only here as a community member, I'm only here as a concerned community member. And again, I just want to use my reach, I want to use my influence, I want to use my experience, my skills to bridge gaps. That's it. I just want to bridge. And by bridge, I mean, you know, when you look at me, you look around this room, you will quickly see the population that's not here, right? You will quickly be able to identify the groups that's not in this room, the groups that's most, most of the time not in these type of meetings or in these type of, when we convene like this. I represent them. Now, I don't represent the foolishness that's going on out there. Those aren't the people that I represent, I don't represent them. But I represent the ones that look just like them. You know what I mean? I represent the ones that look just like those who often is misguided, often don't have the resources and things that we need. So that's why I come along. And I give it my all, man. I don't ask for anything, I don't charge anything or anything, I just do it. I do it for free because I can, because I'm blessed and favored, so understand? So now, what we want to do now is, it's been a lot going on in our city, right? And I've been here my whole life, and my mom before her, and her mom before her. So, you know, we know that it's a lot that goes on in our communities, right? But we gotta combat that, right? So when we see this stuff going on in our communities, then as a community, we gotta turn around and do stuff big, you know? So when we see stuff that's bad going on, we turn around and we do stuff that's good. When we see stuff that brings us down as a community, as a city, we turn around and we want to do stuff that'll bring us up. Why? Because everybody's watching us. People watch us, you know? And they say all of this stuff, and I don't like it because I know that it's not true. You know, I know the value of the Inkster residents here, the people that actually do care about the city, the people who's coming up and putting stuff into themselves. So really, we're just here, we want to do an Inkster Back to School bash. We want to do like a celebration for the kids. We want to send them back to school with a higher morale, you know? Not, let's let go of some of the stuff that's been going on in the summer. You know, we lost a lot of people this year. We lost a lot of good people this year, and it hurt us, it affected us. And by it affecting us, we know it affected our kids. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to steer them right. So by steering them right, we kind of gotta provide, we gotta provide direction for them. We can't just let them go out and hope that things is gonna go right, right? So we kind of gotta get our hands on them and we gotta provide things for them, whether it's programs, whether it's tutoring, whether it's after school, taking them to movies, taking them, whatever it is, because in our community, because I come from here and I'm great. You understand what I'm saying? So if I would've got wasted, or if I would've got washed a lot, nobody would've known or experienced how great I am, you know what I'm saying? And it's a whole lot of us right here in this community that's great. And you will never know if you don't have the programs or if you don't have the resources to pull that greatness out of, you know what I mean? We might have a next Michael Jordan. We might have a next Hussein Bolt, you understand? We might have pilots. We might have surgeons right here in our city. We might have them, but they, how do you reach that if we don't reach them, you understand? So really, what I wanna do is, I just like to bridge all of the community together. So if we bridge our community orgs with the people in our community that do wanna be active, the people in our community that do wanna be positive, that are looking for ways to get out, cause I'm one of those guys. I was running around, but all while I was running around, I was looking for ways to get out, you hear me? I was looking for ways to get out of the game, get away from all of the foolishness. And as soon as I found it, I ran. You know, I ran. Once I got it, I reached back and I gave back, right? So, so what we doing is, so what we doing is on the thirty-first, which is the day before Labor Day. And I know it's an odd day because not only is it the day before Labor Day, it's also a Sunday, right? But what we wanna do is we wanna send our kids back high, you know, high off love, you know what I'm saying? High off knowing that the community cares. So everything that we're doing is gonna be free. We have barbers coming, they're gonna cut the kids' hair. We have stylists coming that's already committed to braiding the kids' hair. Yeah, absolutely. So we'll be there at the rec. We have bouncy houses. We'll be doing free food giveaways, backpack giveaways, school supplies. The thirty-first, you have the thirty-first from one to seven. So we'll, we'll be doing vendors and we're not asking for any money from the vendors, but what we are asking for is if you wanna come set up a table and show everybody your resources, show everybody what you're doing in the city, if you wanna set up a table, just bring, bring some school supplies. That's the only thing we're asking. We're not asking for no money. We're not asking to make anything harder or to raise, raise any prices of what you're trying to vend. We're just asking for some school supplies. So bring a book bag, stuff it with some, stuff it with some pencils and some papers so that we can bless the kid. Because everybody's not gonna come out and say, "I need help, I need help," but everybody needs help. Everybody needs help. So we wanna do it in like a village style, kinda like, uh, if you need something, come take something. If you have anything extra, leave something for somebody else to take, right? So the only thing we are asking is if, you know, if you have some nice clothes, you know, that you made a grow out of. If you've got, you know, some kids or some babies that's, that's growing up, those clothes that they can't fit no more, those clothes still have value. So we're not asking for any holy clothes or any dirty clothes because we got dignity, right? We proud, we proud of Inkster, right? We're not asking for that. We're asking for some nice clothes, right? And if you have it in your heart, go, maybe you can go buy a couple outfits. I was just at Marshall's, um, earlier today and they have four-dollar shirts, three-dollar t-shirts. They have, and they're nice. They're brand new. I was at Menards. Um, Menards have four-dollar book bags, four-dollar book bags right now. And they have four different styles, um, so everybody don't have to have the same book bag. It's four different styles and they're four dollars. So none of our kids should go without book bags. All of our kids have book bags, all of our kids have school supplies. And when they go to all of these different cities to go to school, they should be going knowing that they, the city that they're, that's sending them away care about it. The city care. We not lumping all of our kids into the group with the kids that's out here doing all of this nonsense. We are not putting them all in the same category.
You know what? Okay, so look, it's not, it's not how I want it, so I didn't pay to print. I wanted to, I wanted to print a whole bunch of copies, but it's not right yet. You know how you see flyers on the internet, misspellings and all of that? Okay, all right, so I do have one.
We can create a flyer for you.
I do have one.
All right.
Dino, we appreciate you, man. Um, I like your spirit and we definitely gonna support your event, so we'll be there printing flyers. Thank you. Valerie, Malloria Springer.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. Council, um, oh, this is my mother.
You got two.
Yeah, we got two. This is my mother. Um, we're here to talk about an issue on our street, which I think, uh, you're very familiar with. It's, uh, Blackstone Street. Um, uh, we have been there for forty-plus years. And when we moved there, uh, we had dirt gravel roads, right? And so we did get our, our street paved this year, so, which is the first time, so we, we do thank the city for that. Um, but we also promised that we were going to get curbs as well. That has not materialized. But, but the issue that we are having right now is that ditches or trenches
I saw that.
were, were dug.
Yep.
And they're not serving any purpose on, on our street. Um, the water is still there. The weeds have grown. It hasn't been maintained. We're also told that that was responsibility of the city to maintain those ditches. Um, and, uh, it's just, it's just a mess. Um, and then when we go around to, uh, South River Drive, I see where curbs are going in over there. Now, that's a dirt road. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a bit confused as to why, uh, the city has not moved forward with curbs on our street and addressing these ditches that were dug, um, that are not serving any purpose whatsoever.
When you say they're not serving, are you saying that the water is not draining to the ditch?
No, the water's not draining, no.
So it's not sloped, so we need to check that out. I mean, I've seen the ditches. I'm no engineer, so, um, we will find out.
And, and they're weeds right now.
In the ditches?
In the ditches, yes. I have pictures if you'd like, if you'd like to see the pictures.
Well, I mean, I believe you. You ain't gonna show me a picture. Um.
I can talk to them. I'll get my car and you can call me.
Make sure you get their number. We'll go, we'll take care of it.
Okay, um, but I, I guess the thing is, are those ditches going to stay there because it's devaluing the property?
What's happening with them?
Okay, thank you.
That's great.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This, uh, had been brought up a, a couple of meetings ago and Mr. Bivens did address it.
Okay, okay, they might not have been there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Well, at least we got that resolved. All right, but until we fill them in, I guess we gotta maintain them, so, uh, make sure the vendors know. Get over there and cut it. Okay, Rochelle Wells.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of Inkster, all the dius. Um, I guess I'm piggybacking on what Shirley said and I had no idea. But I'm, I'm specifically naming the old stilettos. Everybody knows where that is, on, on Middle Belt, which is the main thoroughfare in our city. And the weeds are tall as I am. They're all around the complete building, the front, the back, the side, everywhere. And there's a pine tube boat sitting over there. I think that, I mean, it's been there long enough. Uh, like, uh, Judge Cobb said, "We have a great city." Now, it's only as great as we're gonna keep it. And if we don't keep it great, we, how can we be great? How, so we have this problem throughout the city. And I think that maybe it should be addressed, especially when people ride through main thoroughfares and they look trashy as that does. So if, if maybe that one item can be fixed and some of the things on Michigan Avenue that look like weed village can be done, that would, you know, just make the city look a little better anyway. That, that's my complaint. That's about it.
We'll go check that out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Code enforcement supervisors here. So just go check out stilettos. It's privately owned. I saw some movement there several months ago. They storing stuff in the building.
They're still moving stuff.
Stuff around?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go over there and enforce our ordinance, though. Ooh, what's this? Sarah G? Oh, okay. Turn that on. It'll make you respond.
Hello again.
Hello.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You remember me?
I, I know you.
Okay.
I'll never forget you.
Well, you remember me? I've done spoke to everybody about this issue.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay, I love the fact that we're fixing up the...
You're safe. You're safe.
The streets, the water mains and anything else to build up Inkster. I really do. I'm a quiet resident, but when you offend me, I have to come out of hiding. Okay, I, I work. I'm a student at University of Michigan. I'm all for bettering my life, my child's life and where I live. I bought my house in twenty-seventeen on Colonial. I'm okay with everything in my neighborhood, but when you ruffle my feathers, my face will be shown. Okay, so you already know y'all showed up at my house seven deep to approach my seventeen-year-old son while I was at work. And I really wanted to see Jerome today and I definitely wanted to meet Ms. Roots, so everybody can see my face. Cause when, when you show up at my house and make me feel threatened, that something that was put in my house just last year, which was a water meter, just last year, a water meter, and y'all uprooted my grass last year. And now I'm saying, now I'm hearing, "Oh, no, forcefully you're gonna enter my home while, while my seventeen-year-old is there." And then I get a letter from Ms. Roots saying, "Hey, we could do what we wanna do because we're the city." When I say this, I mean this when it comes, when it comes to my kid, my kid, my house, my house. I'm not, I'm not a criminal. My water bill is paid, my mortgage is paid, my DTE is paid, my house is paid, my car is paid. That, that's all me. I, I teach my son to do the same thing, but when you show up at my house seven deep cops, I didn't steal no water. And then you tell my son, "Hey, we're gonna cut the water off on you if you don't let me in your house." And I can't even get ghetto, cause I got my boss looking at me like, "You must stay professional at all times." I was ready to cry at work because Jerome say, "Oh, you gonna let me in?" And all I get is a letter from Ms. Roots saying, "Oh, well, this is the reason, but you just put a meter in my house last year. You just uprooted my grass last year. I had to get out and shovel it." And see, they, Jerome even called me a liar on the phone. And I don't, I wish Mister, where, where's Officer Moore? Because y'all, y'all made me feel like a criminal. Someone who, who honored this city. I don't do drugs, but yet there's a liquor store and a dispensary on every corner. But you treat somebody like me with disrespect? Me? A quiet residence? A student of the University of Michigan? I worked for a LPL brokerage firm. I'm in accounting. I'm, I don't, I'm not selling drugs. But yet you, you, you made me feel like a criminal in front of my son and told me, you, kids are being out here cute. There, there are people that show up at the house to do home invasions, but I have Jerome and Maya Roots telling my seventeen-year-old, "We're gonna cut the water off if all seven of us can't enter your home on you." And we don't care less if she's not here or not. Where, where is my justice? Because my heart is breaking that my city would treat me like this and I'm a homeowner, I'm a homeowner. My, my heart is breaking. My son is at the door. He's not an adult. I'm the adult. And when I said, "Make an appointment when I'm available," Jerome told me, "No." And I addressed you about it and Ms. Roots wrote me a letter saying, "Hey, this is what we gonna do. This is how I'm going to treat you." That, how can you, how can you, why? For a meter that you just put in my house last year and, and it took them two seconds. I showed you the footage on my camera. Took them two seconds, walked in. It's a brand-new meter that they just put in last year in the basement and in the front of the house. But now I'm hearing that it's a whole new system. They're gonna just take all that out and redo it again. The only thing I ever made a complaint to the people who showed up at my house was the grass. And I spoke to you about that, cause I take care of my lawn, my home. It's my integrity. This is my place of residence. So I treat my home with respect, the outer and the inner. But, but I, I don't feel, I don't feel like I received justice from that letter.
First of all, it's not over. Um, you filed a complaint. I spoke with you personally. I actually reviewed the body camera from the police officers. Um, so I haven't addressed the situation. I was out of town last week, so I have not addressed the situation. We're having staff meeting tomorrow. But it's not over. Just cause you received a letter, meaning the situation is not over. I understand where you're coming from. I saw the video. It was, it was, it was overkill. It's too many people standing in the front. I would've been intimidated by that situation, um, if I was you. And you weren't home and then your seventeen-year-old son was home. So I understand exactly where you're coming from.
I'll be back.
But it's been addressed, though.
If it doesn't, I'll be back.
It's gonna be addressed. You, and you're welcome to come back anytime you like.
I will.
All right. I know. I believe you.
You better believe it.
I believe you. Anthony Sherrell.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and the chief as well. I'm sure a lot of you guys know me. Uh, I've been here before. The mayor definitely knows him. And, um, a lot of times when I come, I come with complaints. But a lot of the nights I learn, I come to give you guys praise for the job you do, cause I know everybody has a job to do. But most of the time now, when I show up is when I didn't, you know, cross my Ts and dotted my Is and went to the, you know, who I needed, what department I needed to go to and went up the ladder. And when I don't get results that I need or that I feel like I need, then here I am. And normally I'll come, I just come and talk. Well, this time I came with pictures. Christians speak a thousand words. And especially when it's things that you gotta look at every day, like trash bags on the street, you know, bushes are so overgrown that you can't even walk to the corner, yet to go on the grass. Um, and many other things in my neighborhood. So what I wanted to do, and at my expense, I got some pictures and there's four copies of each, if you can pass them around each other. So what I'm saying will, uh, more resonate with you as to when it comes to blight.
So each packet is the same?
Yeah, there's, yeah, each, each one has four pictures.
Okay.
Um, one of the issues I had was that we had a new, what was it, code enforcement last year? And I tried to open up a good dialogue with him and I thought I did. But when I had my issue and I talked to him and showed him pictures in my phone of my neighborhood, cause I drive to my neighborhood, you know, almost every day. I live there. And then my parents, been there since sixty-six. So, you know, I'm rooted. I'm rooted. I ain't going nowhere. But when I, um, talked about my problems and what I needed to do to get, get them solved, he said, "Get them, call me. Here's my phone. Call me." Well, I did for a week. No response. And then I finally went to my council, my district person, and that's Ms. Roots, and she knows me well.
Very well.
Very well.
They have these pictures.
Right, and, you know, and this is, this is just a small part of it. I mean, uh, the, the things that I have a problem with is trash cans, trash, overgrown brush, houses with grass, you know, like, like the other lady was saying, you know, up to the fence line. And I, you know, I don't come in and say, "Hey, look, everybody do this and do that," and I don't do my own diligence. I'll go, I'll go in my neighborhood. I clean the drains out on my street. I clean the trash up and down my block. I help my elderly neighbors. You know, I like my city and I love my city, so, you know, I'm not one of those that's just talking. I'm doing. I wish it was more out to help me, but I don't worry about it. I'm still gonna keep doing what I'm doing. So I'm here now to make a little dust and hopefully we can get some of these problems solved. And if you look at some of those pictures, um, the one bush, if you notice, that's on the corner that I'm speaking of.
I'm looking at it.
You know how long it took for that to get that big? That's been like that for years.
What street is this?
That's Berkeley and Andover, right on the corner. And there's another one right down the, at the end of the other property with it. There's another one with a car on there. It's been there for five years. They got ticketed and I'm... Chief, um, I, I came to you that day and they came out and put a, a red sticker on it. That stayed there for a year. It's so faded, you can't even see it. So when I talked to the assistant last week and we got a green sticker put on, on it now. So hopefully, that'll get moved. But there's a lot of other issues that...
Can we do this? I want you to get that information. I'm gonna give Latoya the pictures. Places that, you already told us one location. The places that have addresses, if you know them, just put the address on the back of the picture so we can go over there, check it out. We see if it's a code enforcement issue or something we just need to trim and cut, um, as the city.
Yeah, yeah, cause I've, I've asked and I've asked and I've talked to the right people and they just, you know, they said, "Well, you gotta be patient cause things don't happen overnight."
See, when it comes to citation, it might take a couple of months. I mean, we'll write a citation. The court is backed up. So if the person is out of town or just not gonna cut it, it's gonna be months before they get to court.
Right. But some of the other issues are things that, I mean, in, in one of those pictures, you may not have noticed. When we had that tree come down on Pine, you remember how big that trunk was, the, the section of it? Do you notice in one of those pictures, you know where they put it? Uh, back up in the trees. Instead of taking it out, cutting it up and having it disposed of, they pushed it back up in the trees. Look at one of those pictures. You'll see it.
Who, who came out?
I, I have no idea. I don't know if it was a contractor or whether it was a city. But I brought attention to this a month ago, over a month ago.
We'll go pick it up. Just let her know, Latoya, you talked, talked to Anthony. Just let her know where it's at. We'll go get it.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm here. I did my part and I also praise you guys for doing the job, cause I know it's not easy. But I'm climbing the ladder. You know how it goes.
That's what you're supposed to do.
All right.
All right, appreciate you. Ira and Joyce McLean, McLean, Heiderson.
Good evening. We're just piggybacking off of what we've heard tonight. Lots just unkept breeding ground for rats infestation. We've called DPW on several occasions all throughout the summer for this particular lot. We've been where we're at now in Inkster for approximately seventeen years. And the lot has been groomed, probably, I can say, on one hand, the fingers on one hand, and I'll have some fingers left. They would say, "We'll put you on the list," when I call DPW. "We'll put you on the list." And nothing, it's nev, it's not done. It's a eyesore. Like I say, I'm piggybacking off of everybody else. It's just a eyesore and, and.
What's on that, it's just not cut?
Not cut. Not cut. Overgrown.
What list do we put them on? There's no list?
See, we're right on the border of Dearborn Heights. You cross the street, it's Dearborn Heights, and this is Inkster. So for a while, they would say, "Well, that's Dearborn's property, not our property." And then Inkster, you know, back and forth. But it was determined that it is Inkster property.
If it's on this side of Beach Daily, it's us.
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly.
Figure that out.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have somebody go over tomorrow and check it out, and we'll, we'll jump on.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. Five hundred Beach Daily. I wrote it down, just so the staff can know. Barbara Cooper.
Well, hello, Mayor. Welcome back.
Thank you.
To the council, all the employees, all the residents of the City of Inkster. We have problems too.
You don't say.
The Inkster Goodfellows. We have postponed our Bible Walk trip. We are still gonna do it. Oh, no, no, we gonna still do it, so hold on to your money. And all those that's been calling me, I told them, "Hold on to your money, because we are gonna do it." And if they had've came earlier, we would have been able to do it. I was like, "We gotta get rid of that late-for-everything, last minute." Our pancake breakfast is October the eighteenth, from eight to noon. All the pancakes, you can eat pancakes. But you'll ha, also have bacon with sausage along with your pancakes.
So what you're saying is all you can eat bacon and sausage?
No, all you can eat, all you can eat is pancakes. And if there's some left, you can have some of those. And also, it's ad time, and I'd like for everyone to put an ad in our papers. And we'll have the flyers out for the next meeting. They'll be on the table, and then I'll be passing everyone out one. Sister Richardson, if you wanna take care of the council, you can.
Okay, y'all.
Everybody.
I hope she pay for it too.
Now, y'all work that out. But I just want to thank everybody for the support of the Goodfellows. And we need members, we need young members to come out and help, like Brother Chisholm and all them out there. Be on the corners, getting the papers. Selling the papers. Just papers, just papers. Good fellow papers.
Don't hate the player.
Nope, nope, nope. You won't say, "I got you on the corner." No, 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 no. No, but once again, I do appreciate all the help that everyone supports. The Inkster Goodfellows. And we need young people. We need young, no, we need young people to come and help, to take, help take over the Goodfellows. Because all of us in the little bit be sitting down somewhere. We'll help out, but we need to bring some more young people in to train you to tell you how to do it and how to get out there. And I know you all know how to get it. And I need somebody too to go either with me on Michigan Avenue, because we need to hit all those places. The dispensaries, whatever they are, up and down Michigan Avenue, Inkster Road, to help the Goodfellows. And Flower Bowl, he upset me, but I'm gonna go to, go back to him, since he said Inkster need to take care of their own. But your, your business, your business is in Inkster. So Inkster is your business. We get it together, all go down there. We need money, we need money to support these kids. No child without a Christian, with a Christian. You know, we don't, we want them to be Christian. No child without a Christmas. Four to five hundred kids, we trying to service, okay? We try to get everybody, because that's our motto. No child without a Christmas. Now, what child you gonna tell that they can't get anything, because we haven't collected enough money? That I never want to be able to do. I wanna be able to help as many people as we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Octavia Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents. First of all, I would like to thank the ones who have came by and stopped at the Inkster Task Force Farmers Market. We only have three more weeks to go. For, so for those of you who can't come, I just wanna share with you that we are collaborating with MIFMA, which is the Michigan Farmers Market Association, just for the month of August. If you can't come, you can scan this code and give a donation. Very simple. Half will go to the Inkster Task Force, and half will go to MIFMA, which is the Michigan Farmers Market Association. Easy, easy peasy. So three more markets to go. This Thursday, I'm not sure if Mr. Tony here, is Mr. Antoine Shaw, if you have anyone representing him. But this Thursday at the Simmons Center, Mr. Antoine, Big Tony Hot Dogs, is having a community event, just like Mr. Dino got up and talked about. Anyone who wanna come and be a vendor and share what you have is free of charge. And he's gonna have a movie night that, that night as well, this Thursday again, at the Simmons Center. I believe it starts at five o'clock, so, six o'clock, thank you. So please come out and support Mr. Tony. Y'all know he has some great hot dogs, some great hamburgers, or whatever you wanna get off his truck. So support Inkster and local businesses. Finally, I would like to say that the Inkster Chamber of Commerce, we will be starting up our Small Business Development classes and workshops again. They are free to anyone who would like to be, you know, a business owner, you know, to get all the skills you need. And this, this year, we are having an AI class for those folks who, like me, who don't know a whole lot about AI. So that link will be coming out soon. The first class will start in September. But we'll get that link, and we'll make sure that it's posted. And also, the Inkster Chamber is having a laughter on the ground. Some of you guys know some of these comedians, Bobo Lamb, Juicy Dre, and Simply Chanel. Beautiful comedians, make us laugh. This will be Friday, September the fifth, Inkster Recreation Complex. Because we are a volunteer chamber, this is one way that we fundraise. So please support us by coming to the comedy show and just having a good time. Sometimes it's good for us to get together and just have a good time. So those are all of the announcements that I have. Any questions, anyone? Thank you. And don't forget, I will share that information for the Task Force Farmers Market. And then that way, if anyone would like to scan this code and give a donation, fifty-fifty go to us and MIFMA. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hello, American Council and all that. And my, and my wonderful, beautiful family out there, because I know y'all, all my family. Well, anyway, I, I wanna talk about, you know, beautification, cleanup mainly and all that. August twenty-third, okay, we're gonna be at different sites. We, we got the Book of Doja, that's the main site. That's where you come there, you get some doughnuts, some coffee and all that, some three bag gloves and all that. Okay, and then we had Westwood Stolman. Okay, that's another location. We're gonna have dumpsters there, of course. Penn Park, that's Wheatley Park, and Lamone Park. Okay, so, and, and come and hope y'all can help us along, keep the city clean. I need to clean up my act too around there. Everybody see my backyard. And, and, and Mr., Mr. Bishop. Okay, we've been talking about, you know, block clubs and all. One of our block club members, they said they would love to talk to you about a few things. So the next block club we have is usually be the third Thursday. Could you show up? And I might get back with you on that.
I'm gonna be at?
I bet, Book of Doja.
The Book of Doja?
Right, it's around, around six o'clock.
Thursday is, uh?
Of, of March, that's normally how we would have it. That, that's where you probably gonna have to start rescheduling our block club meetings on Thursday.
Thursday?
Oh, right, right.
It'll be this Thursday?
Well, probably this Thursday, short notice and all that, but starting next.
Start September?
Yeah. That, that should work out fine. You know, we talk about different things, you know, something that always in my mind, people always try to discredit the things that we use in our life. You know, our Nubian Brothers, the Egyptians and all that, they say they worship the cat. No, they didn't worship the cat. The cat caught the rat and kept the granaries, you know. But, you know, you find neighborhoods, and I'm not, you know, and I got quite a few cats hanging in my neighborhood and all that. And, and, and I don't see any mice droppings, I don't see no rat dropping, because they take care of business. It might, it might sound unorthodox and all that and all that, but, but. One thing that you gotta be sure, if you got dogs and all, you gotta clean up. You know, you say, now, you say, "Well, you know, I ain't got nothing out there to feed the rats and all that." But them rats, they, you know, especially if you're feeding your, your, your dog that high press dog, dog food, and they had the droppings and all that. You gotta clean up, because that's where the rats going. They gonna get, you know, they gonna, you will find them. You got a lot of dogs, ain't cleaning up. The rats gonna be there, the mice gonna be there. But you got the cats and all that, you know. Cats chase the rat. Okay, and Mr. Dino, man, I worked with him in one of the projects. He had the two projects going in Inkster. He had it for the kids, teaching them how to make thing and do things and all. And then he had that apprenticeship, helping, you know, older guys to try to get them to, show them and tell them how they can, you know, improve their skills in mathematics and science and all that, pass tests and all. He's, he's a great man and all that. And what's that? Somebody, people going off? Okay, I, I love y'all, and it's, you know, that's about all I had to say. Yeah, okay. Okay, you know, we rice program, we started back up. We're gonna need some people to help us with teaching kids a few things. And we started back up. And we wanna, Mr., Mr. Clint, and Mr., you know, Mr. Byron, we wanna be thankful that you allow us to have the program going in Doja. And it's a nice facility and all that, and it's well-run, so, love you.
All right, love you too. Jennifer Rochelle.
Good evening.
Good evening. Latoya, can you take notes, please?
Again, I'm gonna talk about my salon, Harrison. Still need a street fix.
Right.
Okay, but in the back of my building, I keep my building clean, my grass. Whoever cuts the property, the lot next door to the salon, I've been doing it for the last twenty years. Y'all owe me a check.
Okay.
A big check. And like, only one time they came through and cut it this year. So now I did go halfway, I'm not going all the way no more, no more. But I'm, it's an alley back there too. I, I cut the, all the trim stuff off my gate back there in the back of the salon, but the lot is keep growing over. I hate it there.
The lot, it's on the next street, but backs up to your gate?
No, it's, it's.
Right next door? Okay. You know what she's talking about, Latoya?
No, nobody lives in Inkster. Nobody lives in Inkster, they don't know. But anyway, take care of that though, because, because I don't like to keep on, I don't like to keep on trimming up my gate, and no, Inkster not doing their part. And also, it's the King Bud on Michigan Avenue Middle Belt. You have a, a, a no-left turn on the right-hand side coming south. We need one on the left-hand side, because it's gonna be a lot of accidents going up in there.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. Then riding down Andover from Harrison on down towards Inkster Road, you can't even see, if you, you gotta go in the middle of the street to see if there's anything coming. It's terrible.
Overgrown street.
Everything hanging in the street. Who trim trees for you guys?
Tree trimmer.
Okay, tell Tom and Jerry to get busy. Yeah, tell Tom and Jerry they need to get busy. Yeah, it's terrible. But take care of my salon, I don't care. Y'all don't do nothing else. You know what? I, I don't care. I'll take care of my salon.
Okay. Appreciate you. Yvonne Moore.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
City officials and my family in Inkster. I come with you two with two different items. I'm gonna give you my first one first. So Inkster Housing Resident Council is looking to do a cancer walk on October twenty-fifth. This cancer walk, you know, usually October is set just for breast cancer. But we decided we needed to touch bases on all the cancers, especially even the ones for men. You know, their prostate cancer, you know, there's colon cancer. So we wanna make sure that we do that walk. And we're gonna, the proceeds from the walk will help, so I don't have to beg so much during Christmas, because, you know, I be out there begging for Christmas for my kids. But I wanna put, but I really would like to see this. And I've contacted Camanos already, to let them know this is something that we were looking to do, and they're on board. Now, the second thing is, I know the city sent out a letter stating that their construction would be working, they said between August and December. I don't have a problem with that. My problem is when you come in, well, does up all the grass, all the, the street, and don't say nothing. They forgot that when you come in Moore, when you turn that corner, the circle, there's only one way in and one way out. Then there's mu, then there's water that's running, has been running for like the last two, three weeks that's on the corner of Moore and Lehigh. And then my thing is, did we not visit this once before, a long time ago, about moving the barricades, some of them, out of housing? Because with that, how it was that day, I couldn't get out. And then you, I couldn't get out going, going to my, to my left, and I couldn't get out if I went around the Moore Court. And when I asked the gentleman about, "Well, why didn't you guys let, let us know?" Because that was in the letter, that they would let us know when they were gonna tear up pavement. He said, "Well, my boss told me to do this, so, you know, I gotta do this, because my boss said it." And like I told him, move the truck. I need to get by. They said, "Can't you drive your car up on the grass? It's little enough." I said, "No, I want you to move the truck." So then he finally moved the truck. But my thing is, like I said, we need to revisit that once again about removing some of the barricades, because just think, if somebody had been skilled that day or sick that day, they would've died, because they wouldn't have been able to get through. So that's, that's, that's my complaint for that.
Alfreda Wade.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have a, a property tax problem. I, I received a letter from Wayne County that I had delinquent taxes on two properties. I pay my taxes on time, and there's no way the two of them were delinquent. I called Wayne County, and they said the information comes from the city.
It does.
I called the city. I spoke with June. I spoke with June in the finance office. She said, "I'll take care of it." So I pay my taxes today. I said, "Just for giggles, let me look." My taxes are still delinquent at Wayne County.
Well, can you have the property addresses?
I do. Two-five-nine-two-six Lehigh. Two-five-nine-five-two Norfolk.
Okay. Treasurer, he'll check into it tomorrow. Is your phone number on your card?
It is.
Okay, we'll give you a call tomorrow.
And...
I got both of them, two-five-nine-five-two Norfolk.
You know, I've talked to people in this room, and I've been told, "Leave me a message, I'll call you back." No calls back.
You'll get a call back tomorrow.
So, should I, will that person address the delinquent fees? Because the taxes were paid on time, but Wayne County is still, you know, racking up fees.
Yeah, we're gonna address the whole thing.
Okay.
If he were paid, then that was our mistake, we're gonna clear that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have one more public comment that was sent in.
The City Clerk's Office received a public comment from Mr. Charles Blackwell. It has been communicated to Mayor and Council and will be placed in the minute, the meeting minutes under Public Comments.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. City Clerk, you have anything else for us?
Yes. The special election on August 5th, supporting the Romulus Community Building and Site Bond Proposal, was a huge success. Thank you for all those who participated with that. Also, the City Clerk's Office is gearing up to prepare for the Wayne Westland Special Election on November 5th, 2025. More information to come.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just wanted to reiterate, you know, continuing with the water meter replacement. We are now on to the, um, as everyone should know, we've been making appointments based on your trash pickup day. We're now on to the Thursday and Friday pickup day. So basically, we're now open to the entire city, and we're really encouraging everyone to make those appointments. They're really important. The meters are being replaced at no cost to the residents. But we need everyone to get an appointment. So if you haven't gotten a new meter, please, um, call and schedule an appointment. If there are any questions, you can call here to City Hall and we can, can help. But we just want to encourage everyone to go ahead and change under the city ordinance. We require, we are required to have everyone get onto the new meter system. And so at some point in time, we're gonna have to start turning off our old meters. And that's gonna really require us to turn off service. We can't maintain two billing systems. So we just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. You can, again, anyone in the city can make an appointment and get a water meter scheduled. I didn't know I had the time. I know how it feels, right? And then, lastly, keep in mind the deadline for property taxes is August 31st, which is a couple of weeks away. Because of the September, because of the Labor Day holiday, we'll be taking payments until September the 2nd, I believe is the, is the date, the day after Labor Day, which is September 2nd. So the deadline will be extended until September 2nd. And that's to avoid any types of interest and late fees. But we can continue taking those payments. But we encourage, in order for the payments to be on time, to avoid those interests, we do need to get those payments sent by September 2nd. You can come into City Hall, you can pay online, or mail in your payment.
Thank you. Mayor, Council Communication, Councilwoman Roberts.
Yes, Mayor. My colleague and I, Councilwoman Scott, we attended the James Givens and the 1040 Barbara and Beauty Salon Back to School Event. There were just a number of kids that were in need to get haircuts, to get their hair braided. And we're gonna be looking to do something mid, mid-school year with James Givens, so we'll keep you posted on that. Also, I want to say to the chief and to Ms. Lisa, I attended the National Night Out. Normally, I couldn't come as the former city clerk, because I was always doing an election, but that was a phenomenal event. And lastly, Mayor, we gotta get Colton Forstman some help. We gotta get him some help.
I think help is coming.
All righty.
They like it or not.
Right.
All right, that's it for me, Ms. Lisa.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bishop.
Enough for me at this time.
Councilwoman Scott.
I want to put back out there that we will be hosting a community baby shower on October 11th. Myself, the police department, well, the city, the police department, Inkster Housing, and Oak Street Health. So we are taking donations up through October 3rd. So, just diapers, so if you guys see a sale at Target, Costco, Sam's Club, if you guys could just grab a box for our families. We are still accepting sign up for the community baby shower. So parents or expecting mothers that are currently pregnant or have a child up to six months. We are just asking them to register and to list a couple of items that they would ideally like. So, yeah, if you all could just spare a couple dollars, just some clothes that you kind of may see strolling at Kohl's or Marshall's, we'd love for you all to help us out and just kind of make, you know, new expecting moms' dreams come true, so.
Where is it? Where is it?
Oh, it'll be at the rec, the rec center, the, yeah, the rec center. On October 11th, it'll be 12 to 3:00. And I'll kind of keep talking about it and keep circulating, we have some time, but, just wanted to put that out there again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Richardson.
Yes.
Thank you. James, you hear that? I don't know if he was listening. I have flyers out, having a community resource fair, another community forum. And, of course, everyone's listed here. The Red Cross, you can get free smoke detectors for your home. We'll have the Sheriff Department there, Wayne Metro will be there. And they do also help people with water assistance, with weatherization, property tax assistance, since you brought up the property tax, domestic violence, and also veteran support. So whatever your need may be, please come out. Rashida Tlaib would also be in attendance. This is a time to come get her and let her know your concerns. We also have Wayne County Commissioner David Kinesik and our own Dr. Phyllis Long. We'll talk about lupus. I had decided I wanted to, I tried to find mental health. I guess because so much is happening now, especially, I was disturbed when the lady got stabbed at McDonald's. And I called, well, Oak Street Health first. And I didn't go with them because they said that they were located in Dearborn Heights, and I was confused. I thought they were Inkster. I'm trying to get Inkster involved. Yes, ma'am. I know you do, huh? The receptionist I talked to told me they were not in Inkster, that you are in Dearborn Heights. I do, I knew that, but I just didn't... Yeah, I do know that, I know where you are. Yeah, I do, I do know that, but the point of it was, me talking to her, and I'm telling her, "No, I'm on the council, you're in Inkster." And she told me, "No, we're in Dearborn." And that's, that's the thing that turned me off about that. I know where they are, and I know what you do, but I just wanted to bring that out because they are Inkster. People in Inkster, you know, we have limited resources, but the ones we have, we want to use. But she kept telling me that their location was Dearborn, even though I'm telling her, "No, you're in Inkster." So that was just my issue with that. So I just wanted to put that out there. Maybe you could let her know that it is Inkster, so that if anybody else call and they're giving information, it's in Inkster. So I just kind of standing up for Inkster. Also, I just wanted to say thank you to the chief, Chief Jason. My husband had got sick again, even after my childbirth in his uterus. He had pneumonia, and he came home on oxygen. And we had a difficult time doing tanks. And I called the chief, and they were right on. They showed him how to connect it and came by and double-checked on him. And I just want to say thank you, because I know that everyone talks about our employees not being up to par, but you are, all of my employees. I really appreciate you guys, and I thank you what you did for him. And I just want to say thank you, and it's greatly appreciated. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard.
Welcome at this time.
Okay, Mayor Proto.
Yes, real quick, I spoke with a gentleman at Omega Sci-Fi Chapter. They have a nonprofit, or however that's all, set up where they do mentoring for young men and at-risk, at-risk youth. And he was expressing to me that he was looking for space in the city of Inkster to continue that work, because where they're doing it at, it's not, our children are unable to receive those services. So he was asking about the rec center, I told him I would express that, but he was, but in the event there was no capacity for that, I just wanted to put it out to the community. In the event there are some spaces available that you all know of that they could connect with, I could connect you guys, and you can go from that point. But I did tell him I would follow up with him, but I just wanted to let you all know that his organization is trying to bring those services here, because we talk about that. I know Councilwoman Richardson just talked about mental health. So that's another option that we have to tap into, to help facilitate positivity in our community. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Well, y'all, this, I thought it was gonna be a short meeting. Didn't turn out that way, but that's okay, that's what we're here for. I was on vacation last week in Japan, had a great time, recharged the batteries, so I got a brand-new, good attitude. I'm ready to move forward. Unfortunately, one of the things I did do when I was in Japan was log on to social media. And I saw a lot of different stuff on social media last week, and I just want, there's so much misinformation and disinformation. We live in an age of nothing, you can't believe anything you read, especially on social media. That is just garbage all the way around. So I just want to give this out for informational purposes. Obviously, the former mayor, Patrick Wimbley, was sentenced last week. He received 24 months of prison time. After his release, he'll have three months of supervised release, where they, they check on you. It's kind of like being on probation. And then hopefully, he will come back to the community and positively contribute to our community. And some of the things, a lot of people don't understand what happened. And I just want to briefly give you, it's real simple, because I've heard so much crazy stuff, and you cannot respond to all that stuff, so I just left it alone. Someone came in here and asked to purchase 13 acres from the city of Inkster. They offered $225,000. The mayor said, "You know what, I'll sell to you for $125,000 if you give me the other 100 personally." All right, so that's how that, he only received 50 before the FBI swooped in, recorded it, surveilled it, and they sent in their own person to deliver some of the money, and that's how he got put in that situation, or that's how he ended up in that situation. So that's what happened. That matter's been resolved, he pled guilty, he's sentenced now. Now, we have to heal as a community. I mean, he is one of ours, so when he get out, obviously, he will be welcomed back in our community. But we want to make sure, I want to make sure, this kind of behavior and conduct is not okay. And I don't think anybody here thinks it's okay, but we cannot condone this, we cannot act like this is not a big deal. I've heard so many comments, "All politicians are criminals." All politicians are not criminals, you know. That's not true. But everybody deserves forgiveness, if they ask for it. It's not for me to forgive, that's between them and God. But if you're part of the community, you're one of us. I'm connected to him, we all are connected to him. When something happens negatively, it affects all of us. And what it made me do is sit back and reflect on my position. I've been elected mayor twice in this city, and I just want to let you know how much I appreciate that. I do not take it for granted, and I, I'm gonna do everything in my power not to let you down, because I don't like to be let down, I don't like to let people down. We had a lot of complaints today. We're gonna try to solve them all, because that's what we're here to do, to serve. We took this position to serve, and we have to keep that, keep that in mind. It's not about us, it's not about me. If I wasn't making enough money with this salary, I should have stayed in the private sector and did some work and made more money. But once you decide you want to serve the public, you have to serve the public. So, in that spirit, you know, we got to keep moving on, keep improving, we'll be fine, just like Taylor was fine, Romulus was fine, Detroit is fine. But we have to be positive, move forward, and just, just put out more positivity in our own world and make our community what we want it to be. And that's all I got.
If I may, just one more thing, the flyers are out on this, and for your information, I did reach out to, and this was before, two weeks ago, to our chief, who agreed to come and address some of your concerns at this community forum. So I can, I've gotten a lot of complaints about the condition of the city also. And she has agreed that she was be there, or representative, to address your concerns on Saturday. This Saturday, from the 23rd, from 10:00 to 1:00 at the Booker Dozier Conference. You forgot?
She had nothing else to do, anyway.
That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second, we probably move to second discussion.
All those in favor?
All right.
opposed say? All right.